The City River Bank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, February 10, 2015. It is 6:00 P.M. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Thank you, Heavenly Father, first, for this wonderful day that you have provided. We come to you today, Heavenly Father, with praise and thanksgiving on our hearts and in our minds, and we just want to praise and worship you. Tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, as the leaders that you've placed in this office come together with the agenda that they have, Heavenly Father, we just ask for unity, understanding, and we ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you bless each one of them. We know that we're individuals, but we're created by you, Heavenly Father, and we ask for your blessing tonight on this meeting. We ask that you be with the city staff, all the city employees, Heavenly Father, as they go back to the city and provide for the services that we need. We want to thank you, Heavenly Father. Thank you for the wonderful city that you've given us. Thank you for the leaders that you've placed in office. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, tonight, tonight especially, that as they come together, that you just let them be unified in whatever decision that has to be made. And we know it's going to be a great decision. Whatever it is, Heavenly Father, we know that it's coming from you. We thank you for this day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Consul Authority member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Consul Authority member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Consul Authority member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard O'Brien.
Here.
Conflict of interest. Any council or authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we go move on to Item 1.1, Potential Growth of the City of Riverbank as it relates to area east of the Riverbank Industrial Complex.
Mayor members of the City Council, Mr. John Anderson, the city's Contract Community Development Director, will provide an overview of some of the potential opportunities associated with the industrial complex as well as the North County Corridor and things that we need to consider as we plan for the long term. Some of this has been talked about very generally in previous meetings. Tonight is sort of an opportunity to start providing sort of a comprehensive overview, particularly as we go into our strategic planning session at the end of March.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, Community Development Director, City of Riverbank. It's my pleasure tonight to kind of give you a brief overview of just what we might anticipate for future growth within the city. Put together a very short staff report and also PowerPoint for you tonight. But basically, what you'll see is that we obviously have what's going on with Riverbank Industrial Complex. We have an approved specific plan there. Staff is working diligently to bring in more jobs, more tenants to occupy that space, and hopefully we're able to expand it to provide additional opportunities for residents of Stanislaus County as well as the City of Riverbank to work and live within this community. So that's ongoing. The second area is Bruneville Area Master Plan. That's the properties around the Riverbank High School. A lot of these projects were approved back in '05 and '06. A number of those projects, we're continuing to work with existing property owners, developers. Couple of the properties, in fact, this month are going to Planning Commission, ultimately City Council, for revisions to those maps. So we'll see that as they come through. And we obviously have those indicated. And then, of course, we've got the general plan, and with the general plan, land uses are contemplated. And then, of course, this thing called the North County Corridor, which Stanislaus County is working very diligently on the environmental. We're told the next month, month and a half, that document will be released for public comment and review. So obviously, we have the specific plan that's adopted for the Riverbank Industrial Complex. You're familiar with it. You're aware of it. You know what's going on on an ongoing basis. It's hopeful that the portions of those lands be transferred to the city as soon as possible and that we continue to work with other industrial opportunities on this particular property. We have the Bruneville Master Plan area, which is illustrated here. The area in blue is properties within the city limits. Currently, the area outside is within the planning area indicated in red. Within that blue area, we have a number of approved maps that we're continuing to work with. We've got an apartment complex project that was approved off Claus Road just recently. They're applying for tax allocation credits. That's just south of California. We're working with Kerry Pope on a number of properties on Santa Fe, which it's a remapping effort. We continue to work with the Hayes family and others, again, with the existing projects that enjoy entitlements. Those are all listed here on this kind of inventory, if you will, of projects that are approved. What you'll see is that you've got Cornerstone and Elmwood Estates. Both of those projects are final maps. They are currently building within those two projects. KB Home, I think, at this point, has pulled something like 35 building permits within that project. They still have a ways to go, so they're eating away at that inventory, the balance of which are projects that are yet to go to final map. And they're very much dependent upon how this economy plays out and whether or not it's appropriate for those guys to, those guys, the developers, to spend the money on the infrastructure necessary to support, you know, urbanized development, residential development in these areas. The staff continues to work, of course, with the Crossroads West developers, although we haven't had any progress, any discussions, any communications with them since just before Christmas. As you know, we have an advanced funding agreement with the developers to work on a 380-acre specific plan for that property, and that process will take a life on a life of its own. We're prepared to process it just as quickly as the applicants feel it's appropriate. The Riverbank General Plan in and around the Riverbank Industrial Complex has a variety of different types of land uses, including industrial, including additional medium-density residential and low-density residential. The land use pattern in this area is important in light of what we're hearing with the North County Corridor. There is a concern that's been expressed in more than one occasion that with the construction of the North County Corridor, that may limit our circulation abilities, not only for the Riverbank Industrial Complex, but also those properties that are northerly and easterly of the Riverbank Industrial Complex. And I'll show you why that is an issue. It's been suggested that perhaps as another project or another focus, the city should be looking at promoting an east Riverbank industrial plan. And I've suggested if we do the plan, that we be prepared to also do the infrastructure to support it, because we all know without the infrastructure, we wouldn't have the shovel-ready sites that we would need in order to promote job growth and development within our area. It becomes extremely important in light of what we're being told might happen with the North County Corridor, when and if it's ever fully funded and constructed. This is kind of a blow-up. We can all go to the county's website, look in the North County Corridor. We can go down, drill down parcel-specific, but we're being told that as it relates to the Riverbank Industrial Complex, this being Clarabelle Road, and this being Claus, and this being Rainbow Fields, that whether they choose alignment, you know, 1A or 1B or 2A, 2B, and then again, A and B are the point of interchange easterly of Oakdale, that Stanislaus County is currently considering for a future intersection of new 108 to existing 120. In any event, with the North County Corridor, either one of these alignments, if it were to be fully funded and constructed, it would frustrate the circulation for those properties easterly of the Riverbank Industrial Complex. What does that mean? That means that, at least as it relates to the Riverbank Industrial Complex, you would have to, in essence, go, you know, north with your traffic, then go west to hit Claus, and then to come south to a full at-grade intersection of the North County Corridor at or around Clarabelle and Claus. So what does that do with Eleanor? Well, their, the county's proposal is that Eleanor would simply pass under the new North County Corridor. So as we promote urbanized development, job growth opportunities east of the Riverbank Industrial Complex, those properties' circulation, in essence, would have to come north, to go west, to come south, to hit an intersection at Claus and Clarabelle. Doesn't sound like it'd be too good for truck traffic, for employee traffic, et cetera. What we've been told by county staff on more than one occasion is that if the city were to plan this area easterly of the Riverbank Industrial Complex, meaning that we either have a specific plan or a master plan that guides future growth and development in this area, and that we annex that territory into the City of Riverbank, then, as part of the North County Corridor, the county would work with the City of Riverbank to give us an intersection at, excuse me, intersection with the North County Corridor at or around Eleanor on either one of those alignments. That becomes extremely important because it's a project that would be funded as part of the North County Corridor project. It's extremely important because it would provide direct connection from a vehicle standpoint from future east side development to Eleanor and then to this North County Corridor, which is supposed to be this rather large expansive expressway to transport goods and services from the east to the west, to the 99 corridor. So, as you can see, it is an issue, is a concern. Obviously, staff resources are pretty much stretched to, you know, the thin, you know, very thin on a number of different items. But in order to protect and preserve opportunities in this area, it may be appropriate for the city to discuss and perhaps pursue something in this area because of what might happen with the North County Corridor. So that's, I wanted to present that. So, again, this is kind of just informational discussion. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer the questions that you may have or communicate some of the discussions we've had with county staff over this matter.
Could you go back to the map, please?
Yes.
Okay. If we do the 2A, 2B plan, and we annex to the east to Eleanor, that would be adjacent to where the North County Corridor is, would that be also an urban interchange, or would that not be an urban interchange?
If it were annexed before the county completed the project, they would consider that as an urban interchange. They would promote it as an urban interchange. Without annexation, without consideration for urbanized development out in this area, east Riverbank area that I've referenced, between Eleanor and Claus Road, the county would consider that a rural connection, and they would simply install an overpass, which is what they've suggested in both locations.
Secondly, how long does it take to do an annexation in this case, given?
Well, presuming it's all industrial annexation and following the example that's been provided recently by the City of Patterson and not having to deal specifically with ag mitigation issues, it's a simpler process. We would have to develop some kind of a master plan document. We would have to demonstrate from a utilities perspective how we could reasonably service that area, and we'd have to modify our municipal service review document in that regard before we went to LAFCO for consideration. But as a city-sponsored application, it could be done probably in 18 months.
Ronald Barnes would be right about that time.
Do you want me to say a year?
Thank you.[923.41][923.41](Laughter). No, I'm serious. I mean, this is extremely important. We either isolate ourselves, or we take advantage of the possibilities, and the possibilities are tremendous. At first, I fought them just taking the land from the LR, from the Riverbank Industrial Complex. Okay, that's a foregone conclusion. We can't stop that. That was kicked off in 2010. So less, from where we are now, we have to take complete advantage of the anticipated circulation.
And what the mayor is talking about is if you look at this alignment, the properties just south of the existing plant would be occupied by the North County Corridor. If I back up, a couple documents, this, it's kind of turned on its side, sorry. North is to your left edge, so this is Clarabelle. So we're talking about this opportunity, which is commercial per the plan, and then some job-generating business office, light industrial development here, for the most part, would be occupied by the North County Corridor right-of-way that's being proposed by the county.
But with that gone, you know, we do, we do have to move forward. And when we come to our strategic planning, I believe we need to seriously discuss this and how we're going to proceed, and it can't be delayed.
I do have one question. You had indicated that if we go forward with this, that the state 108 project, they would definitely, definitely put this in for us at this interchange? I mean, could they come back and say, "Well, sorry, we ran out of money"?
Gosh, you know, that's kind of a, you know, even in writing, we've had some difficulty. So all I can communicate is, all I can do is communicate what's been told to us as a group. It's not in writing, and certainly is got a, I'm sure, several contingencies is part of it, but, and maybe that's something that we get in writing before we chart this path, but it has been communicated to us that they would change the way that they look at the Eleanor interchange, especially in light of potential impacts. Actually, they're not potential, they're real impacts that the North County Corridor would have on the southern, the south cap, the southern cap of the Riverbank Industrial Complex.
I'd definitely like to see us move forward. I think we have to move forward regardless, but I would like to, you know, get that cemented somehow, their commitment to us on that.
And we can do that, because 2016 may be pivotal for the county in getting funds, and they need our support. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I hope we don't see you again tonight.[1125.01][1125.01](Laughter). Public comment. No action can be taken at this, at this time. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individuals' comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Understate law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have public comment tonight? I'm seeing none. We're moving on to the consent calendar, consisting of Item 3A, wave readings; Item 3B, approval of January 13, 2015, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Are these the ones amended?
No, that was January 27.
Okay. Item 3B-1, approval of January 27, 2015, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes, as amended. Item 3C, consideration for continuing the declared emergency for Seventh Street's storm-drain-outfall line, the stabilized embankment. Item 3D, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving the memorandum of understanding between Stanislaus Business Alliance and the City of Riverbank regarding the joint implementation of the countywide economic development plan and marketing strategy for fiscal year 2014, 2015. Item 3E, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank approving the First Amendment to the Agreement of the City Attorney Services and authorizing the city manager for the city to execute the First Amendment. Item 3F, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, appointing Arlene Figueroa to the Budget Advisory Committee. Do I have anyone wishing to pull any items?
I'd like further discussion on Item 3C.
Item 3C, thank you. Do I have any items from the public that wish to be pulled? Seeing none, we're going to pull Item 3C. We'll take all the others except for 3C. Do I have a motion on Items 3A, 3B, 3B-1, 3D, 3E, 3F?
I'll move to approve.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Consul Authority member Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes, but zero.
Go ahead and ask your questions, please, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted clarification. It says that there is, we need to continue the action for emergency repair, but then it states that the emergency action no longer exists. I just need clarification on that.
Yes. Mayor members of the City Council, this item was initially brought to you as an emergency item in December. As part of the process for an emergency item, they asked that the agenda is at each meeting until the emergency no longer exists. So at this point, we are continuing to evaluate the situation, doing geotechnical work until, and at that point, once we know exactly what we need to do for permanent construction, is at that point, we will take it off the emergency item.
And transition it to a job?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So that is why it's on the agenda. It's sort of an unusual thing, because we haven't had something like this previously, so, but that is why you will see this on your agenda until we're, we're ready to transition it.
Transition, yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar, Item 3C.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve Item 3C in a second.
Consul member Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Item 41, presentation of additional options for creating city council districts in the City of Riverbank pursuant to the California Voting Rights Act.
Mayor members of the City Council, Tom Helen and our city attorney will provide a brief update on this item this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At your last meeting, you directed the National Demographics Corporation prepare a, it's not really a map, but a sheet that showed how much of each school district was within each proposed district within each proposed plan. They did that, and I just passed that out to you earlier. Unfortunately, they were not able to be here tonight. They did not think that their presence was required, as we did. So at this point, we've provided you the map. The map's available to anybody else who would like to request it, and copies are already printed and available. And since they're not here, we just ask that we continue this to the next meeting.
And I do have copies of this for the public, which I will put, I will have put in the back, and then we can post it to the website as well tomorrow, so.
In the staff report, it was asked that we take a look at the maps and narrow it down or reduce it down to a few numbers, which map that we wanted. Is that still the request?
Eventually, we want to get there, Mayor, yes.
What I would like to do is that since we are having a town hall on the 14th of March, that the public, the citizens, get to select which maps they want, and the top four come back to us for discussion and making sure that they're appropriate. And then, the top two, again, we go out again to the public, find out which one of the two or three that they, the public wants, and then from there, we make the decision. What we want to do is make sure that all, all the maps, and we've been assured that they do, follow the voting, the, all the laws relating to the, to the protected groups, and then, you know, have the public weigh in on it all the way. It may be a little bit longer process, but we have until our voting, either 2015 or 2016, depending upon how we progress and how comfortable we feel, is when we vote on it. I'm uncomfortable saying, oh, these are the top three that we're going to just present out there, because one of the ones I liked was, said, "You can't have that one, but no way it fits." I go, "It did on paper." So what we'll do is that, I think, on the 14th, have the town hall, and I also like to lay some ground rules on the town hall, is that I don't care if they're voters or not, but only residents of Riverbank do the selection? Is that possible? That was an attorney question.
We can't, I think, we can make that work in your ultimate decision. Let me say that.
Okay, because, you know, it may, and I'm, I'm not saying people would bring other people from outside.
Right.
We can give them different colored dots if they're not residents of Riverbank, but this is Riverbank for Riverbank, and this is the way I see it. Anything else in the staff report that we need to act on?
I would say with your comments and the schedule we've drafted, we'll probably make a few tweaks to that anyway now and be back at the next meeting.
Yeah, the plan at this point is to, to have the boards available at the State of the City on February 19, and that's when the first time will be with a have dots. I think that having different colored dots for non-residents makes, makes sense, so the council can get a sense of, of the perception inside as well as outside the city. We can, we also do have them coming on March 14, which is Saturday, March 14, at 10 o'clock. At the current time, it's scheduled for the teen center, and if the council would like them to be here at the next city council meeting to review the entire maps, again, we can, we can make that, that happen. So that's really a call for the city. If you'd like to just bring all the maps to the public on the 14th, we probably don't need to bring them back on the 24th of February. It would help the budget a little bit, but it's more important that you feel like you've gotten a chance to review them all, that that's, that's the most important factor, so.
And also the public to review them all.
So would you like, to just go ahead and have them be here on the 19th and the 14th of March?
Yes.
I think it's very important that we have public input and comment. We did have a very important comment at the last meeting about any maps that would purport to divide the State Street area we, we really should look at very seriously as, as eliminating. And so I'm, I'm uncomfortable presenting a map that would purport to do that based on the comment that we had at the last meeting.
Yeah, I think it's really important to have the consultants here, I mean, at any other meetings that we have, that we have the maps present, number one, and that they're able to answer questions, because I know I would not be able to answer, you know, all of the questions, and they're the expertise and can answer the public's questions, and ours, too, when we get to that point.
And they, they will be here, again, for, to answer any questions that the community, the community form on the 14th, the State of the City, and then whatever meetings we need them to be after the 14th, as, as the process of narrowing it down and determining when you'd like to bring this to the, to the voters, so that, that's the plan. But in, in the meantime, I guess the question is, do you want to review them all at a formal, in a council meeting format on the 24th?
No. I, I don't, I don't believe that, that's incomplete information. I'd rather have more information from when the public can have an open discussion and start making their decisions on the 14th.
If the council's in line with that, we will, we will not have a presentation on this on the 24th of February. We will have the community input on the 19th at the State of the City, and then we invite everybody to come out on Saturday, March 14, 10 o'clock at the teen center. There'll be breakfast refreshments and... There'll be breakfast refreshments and hopefully make it, you know, an opportunity to have a good discussion about this and lots of colored dots. So, make it fun.
Excellent, excellent idea.
Breakfast is at 4:30?
We're going to try and make it fun.
Breakfast is at 4:30. Why are you having it at 10?
I'm sorry, Mayor, you'd like us to have it available at 4:30. I know you start your day earlier than most. You've put in a half-day by 10.
City Manager, I have a question. And for the public, if they have any questions in the meantime, between these meetings and sessions, what's the protocol for them to ask their questions?
If they would like to submit their questions in advance via email, they can email those to the city clerk, and we will try to be able to prepare to answer those in the community forums or at a, at a public presentation. If there's something specific, we'll, we'll try and answer it individually, but I don't, I want to make sure that we get, we get the input from the consultants, because as you mentioned, this is a very complex process, and it is determined by state law, and we want to make sure that we're providing, you know, additional information. Clearly, myself and Tom, we can answer general questions about the general process, and we'd be happy to do that. If there's anything in particular, though, about how the districts are drawn, we would want to make sure we contact the consultant. Does that?
This is a public proceeding. Anyone from the public wishes to comment on item 4.1? Seeing none, we have provided the staff with guidance, and we'll move forward on to item First reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, adding Chapter 125 Tattoo and Body Art Establishments to Title 11, Business Regulations, and amending Title 15, Zoning Amending, Section 1, Section 153.076, Uses Permits in Neighborhoods, Commercial Districts, C1 Zone 2, Section 153.092, Uses Permits in the General Commercial Districts, C2 Zones and 3, Section 153.106, Uses permitted in Commercial/Industrial CM Zone of the City Municipal Code.
Mayor, members of the City Council?
Do I open the public hearing? This is a public hearing?
You can open it now, yes.
I open the public hearing?
And then, I just let you know, Mr. John Anderson, our Contract Community Development Director, will be presenting this item as well as the next three. They all relate to ordinance changes. This, the first one is in regards to tattoo and body art establishments. That is a follow-up on the moratorium that the council adopted late last year. This is an opportunity for you to review what staff has come up with for more permanent regulations of this land use, and so at this point, I will, I will hand it over to Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, Contract Community Development Director with the city. As you'll recall, this item was brought to your council as an emergency ordinance back in September, September 23rd of 14, and the issue really was, we had a number of different tattoo establishments. We were wanting to set up shop in town, wanted to relocate, et cetera, and then our code really didn't deal with it. So council felt it was appropriate for us to kind of take a timeout, which is what that was. And then again, on October 28th, City Council meeting, you decided to give us an initial six months to develop the ordinance, which we're now presenting to you. Because as an ordinance changed to the land use section in our ordinance code, it is necessary, it is necessary for this item to go to the Planning Commission. So we did present this to the Planning Commission, and what you're seeing tonight is an item that's gone through at least one prior public hearing, and obviously, obviously the public hearing tonight as well in front of, in front of your council. So I've got a PowerPoint, obviously we've got a staff report that's been presented, and then I also want to talk about some of the deliberations that the Planning Commission had relative to this item specifically. So, the, the proposed amendments to City's municipal code, again, is to deal with tattoos and body art establishments. Right now, the code doesn't really necessarily deal with that type of land use, land use by definition. So it provides that opportunity. It also provides, that type of use is a permitted use in various zoning districts, including the C1, C2, and CM. The, the provision that staff has suggested and advocated from the very beginning is that this be a staff approval process rather than a conditional use permit, which is a little more onerous, certainly costly, and certainly more time-consuming for the applicants and project proponents, because they would have to go to the Planning Commission, as opposed to something that would be approved, reviewed, approved at staff level only. The current regulations, the city does not currently regulate this operation. This is obviously part of health impacts. Obviously, the city is very concerned and associated with that. It's also an update in kind of following state law and what they've done with AB 300. Obviously, these practitioners are already governed by the state of California, very specifically under this AB 300 law, and we're trying to track that, not trying to make things more complicated. So that was another part of this ordinance development, that we worked very closely with, not only the practitioners in town, but also legal counsel for the city. Proposed ordinance will address negative secondary effects, establish application and licensing procedures, which I've talked about just generally, and establish a number of requirements regarding location of tattoo establishments as it relates to one another. Post-ordinance deals with such things as, you know, location of that type of use next to an adult entertainment business, facilities that would sell alcohol either for consumption on, on sale or onsite, as opposed to off-site consumption, as well as location next to schools, parks, daycare centers, et cetera. Again, we're talking about an annual review of the establishment, which is very consistent with what AB 300 currently requires anyway. So we're, we're not trying to create an additional rules and regs in that, in that regard. And then also gives us an opportunity to mitigate any potential impacts that we're aware of that have been caused or created by that particular use. The proposed ordinance establishes prohibited conduct, and then clearly outlines those obligations, which in essence almost becomes a contract between the city and the operator. And then goes on, again, references AB 300. Again, these, a lot of this stuff is exactly right out of AB 300, to not, not frustrate and/or duplicate what's already been done, but to, you know, in essence, embrace those local, state, and federal regulations as it relates to these types of establishments. The City Attorney's Office has done research. They've come up with a number of different cities that they've surveyed. They're not necessarily surrounding cities or cities within the state of California where they've dealt with this particular type of land use specifically. In most of those cases, you'll notice that they've required conditional use permits. Actually, Commissioner, Planning Commissioner McKinney felt it was very important that the City of Riverbank consider requiring a conditional use permit, and he voiced that concern, and in fact, promoted that position in a, in a motion, which ultimately failed at the Planning Commission, because the other planning commissioners felt it was appropriate that it be handled at a staff-level approval and not necessarily, not necessarily processed through a conditional use permit. So again, site location and development regulations, very critical. We surveyed 14 some other, other cities. You've got City of Medifee established the distance provisions, which we have kind of embraced within our ordinance. City of Banning, very similar. And then again, hours of operations. Some cities regulate, some cities don't. We've been very careful to work with the practitioners in town to try to establish reasonable hours of operations that would be specific to their type of use. What we found out is that most of these businesses, their clients report to the business on appointment for the most part. So, and so the permits that we would work with internally recognize that. So if we have normal hours of operation, that if they had an appointment, they'd come in or would run beyond the permitted hours of operation, they'd be allowed to do that. And in fact, in working with Daniel Friedman here in town, that's exactly the way his permit is worded, so he has the flexibility to take on appointments and to exceed and/or extend beyond the normal hours of operations his business may, may be conducted in. And then it goes on to talk about what City of Merced, City of Merced has done. So it's, it's been a little bit of work, obviously, for staff to come up with this presentation to you tonight. We've done some surveys of other cities in California, and then I've shared with you some of the concerns that the commission has relative to the type of process that we might insist on in the City of Riverbank. One other item that I wanted to bring up is a revision to the ordinance as presented to the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission felt was important, and that is that they make a distinction between those businesses that sell alcohol for off-site consumption versus those businesses that sell alcohol for onsite consumption. So there are money to make a distinction between the two. So the presentation that's made to you tonight by the Planning Commission represents that distinction of those types of uses and the proximity of tattoo parlors to those types of uses. So that's what's been presented to you tonight as attachment two, which is a proposed City Council ordinance as amended by the Planning Commission. The ordinance as unmodified is presented as attachment number one. So after having said that, this is a public hearing item. There may be folks in the audience that wish to speak on this item, and I'm, of course, available to answer any questions or concerns the council may have.
Thank you. And before I bring it to the council, this is a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to make a comment on item 5.1? Right behind you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, my name is Edward Jones. I live in Mobile Home Park on the west side of town. I'm aware of the, or I'm familiar with the tattoo parlor we have in town. I don't think this town is big enough to qualify for another tattoo parlor up here, maybe in the shopping center on Oakdale Road, but here in town, I don't know what. And it's the drinking and going, is this what goes on in a tattoo parlor? Some of the owners that have tattoo parlors, I know of, they have customers come in and they tattoo them. They don't sit there, browse and drink and have a party. I don't know why this big discussion, I thought that was all done months ago. We want the businesses in this town, I grant you, but there's such a blow-up in this tattoo parlor. There's a good one here in town, and he's got a good reputation, and what we want another one for? I have no idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing? Seeing no additional public, I bring it back to the council for questions, comments, and/or actions.
I'd like to just thank the staff for the timeliness in which they completed the study and the thoroughness that they put into it. It was a good job done.
Well, my question, when I first read the, the ordinance of item 5.1 was, who else are we regulating? Because I don't want it to appear that we are singling out our current establishments and that we're limiting them and their business by regulating their hours that they can, of operation. So, but I'm glad to hear that you had sought the advice and the expertise of our current establishment, and I'm assuming that he was in agreement and working with you and felt that the ordinance that we are proposing would work for him as well as others. I can, I can assume that safely, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, this, I don't believe the ordinance will affect anyone who already is established that's within 500 feet of a area that's serving alcohol. That's correct?
Right, they're considered non-conforming. Right.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Since this is the first reading, we will hear this again when?
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting, all right. So, we accept, do we have to make a motion accepting the first reading?
We need a, a motion to introduce the ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we introduce the ordinance.
I'll second it.
A motion to introduce the ordinance, and a second.
Council Members, Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 5.2, first reading and...
Mayor, one point of clarification. Is it the ordinance as acted upon by the Planning Commission?
By the ordinance acted upon by the Planning Commission.
That was the intent of my motion.
Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you. Item 5.2, first reading and introduction by title only of ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15, Chapter 153, Zoning Amending, 1, Section 153.003, Definitions, 2, Sections 153.061, Uses permitted in the multiple-family residential district R3 zone, 3, Section 153.077, Uses permitted with a use permit in the neighborhood commercial district C1 zone, 4, Section 153.093, Uses permitted with a use permit in the general commercial district C2 zone, and 5, Section 153.107, Uses permitted in the use permit in the commercial industrial CM zone of the City Municipal Code.
Mayor, members of the council, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. John Anderson will be presenting these items. The next three items all have relationship to the city's housing element and in conformance with the city's, consistent with provisions of the city's housing element and necessary to comply with state law. And so at this point, Mr. John Anderson will be presenting each of the next three items.
Do I have to open public hearing for each one?
Yes.
Okay, I'm opening the public hearing on item 5.2.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, Contract Community Development Director, talking tonight, now, about three particular items, individual, having to do with housing element, housing element law, and trying to comply with our four-cycle housing element obligations before we enter into the fifth cycle, housing element, and have to report to the state of California how we have progressed with our commitments that we made as part of our last housing element. This first item is dealing specifically with the definitions of a number of different areas, emergency shelters, supportive housing, target populations, transition housing, emergency shelters, and so on, so forth. So the, the original commitment, and I'll go through the PowerPoint here in a minute, but the original commitment, you know, fell about 2008, 2009, set up a work program wherein the city committed to process these ordinance amendments sometime between 2010, 2011. Unfortunately, that never happened. So what I'm doing tonight is I'm bringing these items to the forefront. They are ordinances, because we're physically asking to change the Riverbank Municipal Code to reflect, you know, changes in state law, quite frankly, and that helps to, helps us with our score in promoting the next fifth, fifth cycle of our housing element. So it is critical. It's unfortunately a bunch of additional work that the planning department had to enter into, and it's additional consideration that both the Planning Commission and the City Councils had to, will have to deal with. So anyway, so let me, let me, after having said that as a preface, let me go through this. So what we're talking about doing is it, is amending the definition of the fam, what a family is, amending the definition of what a single family, of a dwelling in a single family, what that means. We're talking about amending the uses permitted in multifamily zones to allow things like emergency shelters, transitional housing, housing and supporting housing, and then also talking about other types of shelters and whatnot that might be permitted in other zones. So that's, that's what this is really all about, is the SB 2, which is what we're trying to comply with, which was initially enacted in 2007, became effective January 1st, 2008, and it actually summarized... and it actually summarized the statutory requirements behind these definitions and what local jurisdictions needed to do in order to revise their ordinance code to comply. Again, it goes, you know, what's the requirement of permitted zone? Must have sufficient capacity, develop at least one year-round emergency shelter. Again, we're not physically doing these things. We're providing the opportunity for them to be accomplished. That's obviously a distinction, and our code has to recognize this. Permit must not be, must be nondiscretionary, which means it's, it's easily obtained. However, we control it with making it available in certain zones that are more acceptable, which is what we've done. It establishes permit procedures, development and management standards, and then also talks about things like emergency shelters. So you will update the use permit in the R3 zone to include emergency shelters, which we've, which, again, our commit, our original commitment was June of 2010. Obviously, we missed that date. So we're here tonight to try to resolve this issue before we go for, for our fifth cycle. And then again, where our obligation, you know, per our existing adopted housing element and per Program 5.1B is that we will update these definitions. So that's what we're attempting to do here. And then again, implementation program, again, out of existing housing element per SB Senate Bill 2, is to deal with things like emergency shelters, transitional housing and whatnot. And then again, another implementation strategy. So, so here we go. Current, current definition of family, an individual or two or more persons related by blood or marriage. This is what's in our code now, or a group of not more than five persons who are related by blood or marriage, excluding servants, living together as a single household unit, et cetera. Proposed definition is much cleaner, much simpler, and quite frankly, is consistent with not only state law, but what other jurisdictions are using. And that is that it's one or more persons occupying a dwelling unit and living as a single house, keeping unit, and distinguished from a group occupying a boarding house, lodging house, lodging, house, motel, or hotel. And then again, the intent behind this definition is it implements our program, part of our adopted housing element, Program 5.1B. Single family, current definition is detached building designed for and/or occupied exclusively by one family, a single-family dwelling should not include, should not include mobile homes, which is kind of odd, but shall include modular homes. What we're proposing here is a, is a new definition of the single-family residence, which contains one dwelling unit on one lot. All rooms within a single-family attached dwelling should be interconnected, because we've had issues with that, the rooms not necessarily being connected. And single-family dwellings should include a dwelling that is constructed for the purposes of providing supportive and transitional housing. Again, complies with our implementation policy per our housing element, and it's consistent with state law. If we don't, what happens if we don't do this? Well, the state has basically said in the law that, you know, we can, they can allow emergency shelters in any zone, any district. So the intent is to identify those districts which would be most appropriate for emergency shelters, as an example. So that's kind of the, the program on, on, on item 5.2 in a nutshell. Obviously, the planning commission considered this item, this language, and they deliberated on the item, and ultimately took action on December 16th to recommend to your body to approve the proposed ordinance amendments as, as suggested. Planning commission did raise a few questions pertaining to definition of dwelling, and that's covered under the staff report on page six. And then ultimately, council, the planning commission did take, take action to approve it. So what I'm asking you tonight for first reading and introduction is to approve proposed city council ordinance as shown as attachment one to your staff report. Are there any questions?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there anyone from the public wishing to comment on item 5.2?
This is Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and it's Edward Jones again. If I misunderstand this, you're going to try and tell people how to live? Is this what, or did I get this all wrong? It seems like they want certain people, they want people to, they want a governor to help people that are living in their own dwellings. Some dwellings have a lot of people living in them. Of course, that's, that's nature and comedy now. But this makes no sense to me. This is kind of inheriting on my private property or my private feelings. I live in a mobile home, and I don't like this. It doesn't sound right to me.
Any other public comment? Bring it back to the council. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
This does not dictate how people live within their homes. This is also now including mobile homes as, counting as a dwelling. What it's saying is that if you and two other people decide to share a dwelling, you can be considered as a family unit. It does not say you have to be a family to be a family unit in a single-family home. So it is not dictating on how you live. You can live as you wish, but what it is allowing is for the inclusion of different parameters that we call families nowadays. It also is including mobile homes as, counting as a dwelling.
Okay, man.
That's, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to clear up definitions.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Anderson, I do have a question. Is there anything that we need to do to provide land-use housing for veterans? Or is our language all-inclusive, or do we need to specify?
Well, the, the language that we have right now is not discriminatory towards any one particular group. Housing is housing available to anyone who can either rent or own, rent or own that particular house. As it relates to veterans, I'm not aware of any other distinction unless you're talking about financing, special financing strategies and/or programs that are offered either by the state or the feds to help, you know, veterans into these types of homes. The next item, or one of the next items we're going to talk about has to do with deviations in our standards to accommodate individuals with handicaps. So in that case, you might have a veteran who may be a wounded veteran that needs some special accommodations with zoning setbacks or some other standard that they would be able to apply to. But again, it's not necessarily just focused on veterans. It's available to anybody that may need that. So I, did I answer your question?
You did. So I'll make sure it's all inclusive and, yeah. And, you know, there are incentives through CalVet, and I just wanted to make sure that people know about that and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions from the city council? Saying none, I entertain a motion to introduce item 5.2 with attachment one.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 5.2 with attachment one.
I second.
We, we are introducing it as reading, not as approval. We have a recommendation for introduction for reading, first reading of item 5.2 with attachment one and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.3, first reading and introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15, land usage, Chapter 153, zoning, Section 153.185, density bonus requirements of the city municipal code. I open the hearing at this time.
And then the staff report will be provided by Mr. Anderson, and then public comment.
Almost done here. Mayor, members of the council, we have an item here tonight. Again, it's a public hearing item, and we're asking to make modifications to our current density bonus provisions in our zoning code. This is again in compliance with passage of previous state laws and also a commitment that we made as part of the fourth cycle of our housing element. What you'll notice in the staff report is that there's a little bit more flexibility provided under state law, and it's just, it's, it is a little more complicated. There is a sliding scale, but it's a little more defined and will be part of our ordinance code. So again, what we're suggesting tonight is to amend the current density bonus ordinance for the, for the city, and that we're talking about referencing specifically Section 651, 65915, which is part of the existing California Government Code, and then to fold in some of the matrix requirements in the density bonus for lower-income developments. State density law is a little bit history, was first established back in 1979. It was basically a flat 25% opportunity. And then we had Senate Bill 1818, which was adopted in 2004, which established a sliding scale and higher maximum attainable density bonuses depending on the amount of affordability each one of the projects were to deliver. So that's what you're going to see in the staff report. That's what you're going to see in the ordinance, and that's what we're trying to implement as a, as an update, if you will, toward density bonus provisions. So again, housing element adopted in '09, contained goals. Goal said that we were going to do this, and we were going to take care of it by 2010, and we're, we're close, I guess, a couple of years later. Adopt procedures and criteria found in state density bonus law, will stay current with statutory requirements. So we made sure this ordinance would not only live to the requirements that were adopted in 2004, but would accommodate future revisions to the law, so it wouldn't have to go back through this process again. And it obviously implements Program 2.1D of our existing housing element, which is extremely important as part of our performance evaluation that the state will undertake with our fourth, excuse me, with our fifth cycle housing element update. So after having said that, this item, just like the previous items, were presented to the planning commission for consideration. The sliding scales that I was referring to are shown on page two of six of your, of your staff report. Talks about incentives. The planning commission deliberated on this item. Staff did answer a few questions. There wasn't much in the, in relationship to additional questions offered and/or requested. And then on November 18th, the commission did approve, or recommend to you that the city council approve this particular ordinance. It is an ordinance. This will be the first reading, obviously conducting of a public hearing. The full ordinance is shown as attachment one in your staff report. And that's, that includes, actually, attachment one shows, shows the red line, or in this case, blue line revisions to our existing code, and then attachment two would be the clean version of the ordinance. So attachment two is the version that you would be acting on preliminarily tonight, and then ultimately, for after your second reading, introduction, take a formal action on it. So after having said that, after having gone through the staff report, any questions or comments?
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Any member from the public wish to comment on item 5.3? Saying none, I bring it back to the city council for comment recommendations on item
I'll make a motion to approve item 5.3.
I'll second that.
Okay, we are introducing the first reading and introduction of item 5.3, attachment two.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.4, first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, adding Sections 153.221 through 153.229 to Title 15, land usage, Chapter 153, zoning of the city's municipal code.
And once again, I'll ask Mr. Anderson to provide the report to the city council this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, Contract Community Development Director of the City of Riverbank. This is, I think, the last housing element-related item that I have for you tonight. I'm sorry, I don't have more. If you'd like, I could talk more about housing element if you'd like. Anyway, so, so this is, again, another commitment that was part of the last housing element cycle. It's an opportunity for the city to help those folks, those people in town that may need some kind of reasonable accommodation because of some handicap or handicap-related item. The, the ordinance code obviously is fairly rigid when you deal with setbacks, you deal with parking, you deal with a lot of the requirements. There are opportunities for deviations to that. It's called a variance. I don't know if you've seen variances very often. They're extremely difficult to approve because the findings are very onerous, and unfortunately, on very few occasions are they ever approved. So the idea is, under reasonable accommodation provision, that if an individual has a demonstrated need to do certain things to their property, then they'd be allowed that opportunity. One example I can think about is that we had an individual who had, had a, a new mobile van that they needed to purchase in order to get around. They had some handicapped, and they needed this specialized van. Well, the specialized van, because it has lift mobility in it, is taller than a normal vehicle and couldn't literally get through the garage. So they wanted to add an addition to their garage, but the addition that they wanted to add encroached into the setbacks. So here's a provision under the reasonable accommodation where we might be able to work with them. We have to notify the adjacent property owners, because everyone needs to know what's going on. But we have an opportunity to, to modify our existing code to accommodate this special condition. So that's, and that's about the best example I can give to you tonight on this reasonable accommodation. So I'll go through PowerPoint. Establishes criteria and procedures for requests to be considered, provides opportunity to the city to provide reasonable accommodations to individuals with a disability protected under state and federal fair housing laws. Again, this is, you know, in compliance with state, existing state and federal law, and is an obligation as part of our existing housing element. And that's what we're referencing here is Program 5.3, 5.3A, talking about adopt written reasonable accommodation ordinance. So in, in this case, we said December of 2012. Anyway, again, we're close. So we're moving forward. This ordinance does propose application procedures and criteria, establishes it as a ministerial process, not unlike tattoo parlors, where it's approved and denied by the community development director unless appealed and/or there's dispute arises, and then it goes to the commission, which is very, very typical. And establishes certain findings that the community development director must make to grant and or deny the request for the accommodation. And then again, it implements existing program, and it will help with our review and performance evaluation for the fourth cycle going into the fifth cycle. So, and there's a setback obligation that I referred to as an example. There's others where they may not necessarily have all of their off-street parking obligations because they may need to occupy it for something else. And there's another example that we can share with you tonight. So after having said that, just like the other housing element adjustments, this item was presented to the planning commission for their consideration deliberation in a public hearing. Those comments and notes are referenced in your staff report on page five of six. And October, excuse me, on November 18th, 2014, the planning commission held public hearing and recommended to your council the approval of the language as presented to you tonight for approval for reasonable accommodation. So that is shown as attachment one to your staff report, and it starts right after page six of six of the staff report. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment or question item 5.4? Saying none, I bring it back to the city council for questions or, and/or recommendations.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 5.4.
Item 5.4, we are, this is for the first reading and introduction of item 5.4, attachment one through Exhibit A. Okay.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to accept the first reading and introduction of item 5.4 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.1, a resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving a memorandum of understanding with a... a memorandum of understanding with the Riverbank Mid-Management Employees Association for term of January 3rd, 2015, through June 30th, 2017, regarding the salaries, benefits, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. Is Mr. Anderson giving this one?
Actually, yeah, I think Mr. Anderson should also give this one. Actually, Maricela is going to be providing this one. However, I do want to publicly thank John Anderson for the work that he and his staff has done. Each of these items involve a significant amount of research. As you can tell, we are going back through and catching up on some things. In addition to the staff reports before you this evening, it also required the same public noticing process and staff reports before the Planning Commission. So himself, his staff, David Niskanen, city staff Janet Smallin as well, and he's been getting an incredible amount of work done over the course of the last 18 months that he's been working with the city, and I just want to acknowledge that this evening. Now, next meeting we have Maricela giving five staff reports. So we're just getting her warmed up tonight at this point. This is Maricela Garcia, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, we are presenting to you the memorandum of understanding between the City of Riverbank and the Mid-Management Employee Association. This is the work that has been finalized over the past four months, where we have been negotiating this labor contract with the employee association. Currently, we are still under negotiations with the miscellaneous group for the city. And so this contract, some of the key terms are what I will be going over. The first is the compensation piece. And so following ratification, and it would be retroactive to January 5th, we would provide the members of the Mid-Management Employee Association a 1.5% salary increase. The second increase would come the first full pay period of January 2016 with another 1.5% increase. And a third increase would be provided in July of 2016 of 1.5% as well. All other benefits at this point in time would remain status quo for the group. We have also included some verbiage regarding a classification and compensation study. What the city will do is we will complete a market-based classification and comp study of all of the classifications that are represented in the association. We will prepare this classification and compensation study either through the use of in-house staff, or if we deem so appropriate and the City Council accepts, we would perhaps go out for a consultant to provide these services. This study would be completed and provided to the group by April of 2017, and would be used during the subsequent negotiations. We have a sick leave cash-out provision within the prior labor contract that we are proposing to eliminate, and the city agrees to one final cash-out of up to 48 hours to those employees who are currently eligible under the terms of their memorandum of understanding. Once this final cash-out is provided after ratification, the employees would no longer be eligible for a sick leave cash-out. We have included within this agreement a vacation cash-out, which would authorize our employees to cash out up to 40 hours during the first pay period in July, only if the employee has a balance of 250 hours or more of accrued vacation after the cash-out, and they must have taken at least 36 consecutive vacation hours during the previous fiscal The tuition reimbursement of up to $1,500 would be reinstated into their contract. There are some specifications. The employee must have received at least a passing grade, and they must also be taking a course of study that's related to their current job. The boot allowance, we've agreed to increase the boot allowance reimbursement by $50. So this goes from $150 to $200, and we would process any current fiscal year reimbursements under this agreement. Our floating holidays would remain status quo, and the city paid a leave for the holiday closure that we enjoyed for the past two years would be eliminated. They've also agreed to eliminate what's known as a Me Too language. This clause was used a lot during the recession to make sure that the city's bargaining units across the citywide would be consistent in terms of any concessions that would be applicable to both groups. And so they've agreed to eliminate this language since we feel it's no longer necessary. And then all other terms that are within the memorandum of understanding would remain unchanged unless there was a specific tentative agreement that we've signed. And at this point in time, there are no other agreements other than the fact that we agreed to the classification and compensation study. There are some minor revisions, and these are all through requirements of the pension fund. We did sign an agreement that for the next 10 years, we would be contributing towards the pension fund. And so we are simply updating the rates that we would be paying on an annual basis for each employee per hour. And with that, the financial impact of this particular agreement with the Mid-Management Employee Association would be of $56,000 with a $27,000 impact to our general fund. And this is over the course of the three-year period, or two-and-a-half-year period, I apologize. So this is not just an impact that will be felt this year, but within the course of the agreement itself, which will expire in June 30th of 2017. And so tonight, we're recommending to you the consideration of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Riverbank and our Riverbank Mid-Management Employee Association. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the City Council?
Just a comment. Thank you for all your hard work in putting this together and coming to these terms. I think it's a good contract.
Thank you. This is a public forum. Anyone from the public wish to comment on Item 6.1? Say none, and I bring this back to the City Council for action.
I make a motion that we approve Item 6.1.
Second that motion.
We have a motion to approve Item 6.1 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And Mayor, members of the City Council, I would like to also thank Maricela Hernandez, Katie Lemmons, and Alvaro Zamora, who have been my team in this negotiation, as well as Donna Williamson from Libra Cassidy Whitmore, and as well as all members of the Middle Management Group and their representation, Bob Phipps. It has been a very productive process, a very collaborative process, and I believe that it is a good agreement for all. So I want to compliment all involved, and we look forward to coming to a similar conclusion with the miscellaneous group in the not-too-distant future.
You know, I was going to say almost the exact same thing, and you took my thunder again.
My apologies.
Yes, right.
I need to work on my mind reading.
Maricela, I'd like to thank you and your team for all the efforts that you have. You did a superb job, as always, and also with Cassidy and Whitmore and all their individuals, as well as the city manager for her inputs and guidance. Katie, is she here? There you are. Hi, Katie. Thank you. Item 6.2, Jacob Myers Park Master Plan Update.
And thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to Sue Fitzpatrick, who's going to be providing an update on the Jacob Myers Park Master Plan. This is something we've talked a little bit about in the past, but as we're going through some of our major projects, I thought this was a good time to talk about the overall master plan, because there's been some discussion about possibly expanding the holdings of the park with some leased land that the Army Corps is making available. And as we talk about that, I wanted to make sure that there was context for the council as well as the community as we go forward and look at this in the coming months. Sue, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Mayor and members of the council, one of the things that, or items that came up on the strategic planning was to do this presentation and just give an update on the master plan, kind of centering on, as the city manager referred to, is the expansion of parking, but also the extension of the trail into the Army Corps property. So I'm just going to kind of go through for people who maybe aren't as familiar with the master plan, just where we've been briefly. I'll go through that and then get us to where we are now. So back in August of 2003, the city and the Friends of Jacob Myers Park worked on completing the master plan of Jacob Myers Park. So we've been working on this for about 15 years. And I know a couple of years before the master plan came to be, a group of community members walked the park and kind of wrote all the visions of what they'd like to see out there. So this has been a very long process, but this master plan has been a very valuable tool for us in obtaining grant funding and just accomplishing everything in a pretty timely manner in our development. So Phase 1 was done in, between 1999 and 2004. We accomplished quite a few things in that five-year period. The boat ramp, the new restroom, new parking lot and lighting, the new playground equipment, replacement of the picnic tables and barbecue pits, development of the reservation areas. The Rotary Club helped us a great deal with a couple of those areas. We put in the finger park, horseshoe pits, developed the front park host site in order to help us oversee the improvements, and then the completion of the bicentennial grove. So in looking at the master plan, the front eight acres, where's that? Right here, is where that whole development occurred. So that's what we refer to as Phase 1. In Phase 2, that was done in the next period of time, which 2004 to about 2009, we relocated the Yahhee Bowman, which was an archery club who had the 47 acres in a lease. So we relocated them, and we began developing the loop trail and the development of the campground. The two vaulted restrooms went in, development of the walk-in picnic areas, picnic tables, garbage cans. The open grass area was developed in the rear end of the loop trail. And we developed the second park host site, and then we put in the nature interpretation signage. And those were all done, both Phase 1 and Phase 2, were done with a variety of resources. We had a Prop 12 funding back then. We had Prop 40 funding. Those all came from park bond money. We had, the Statzz House County helped us with the playground equipment. We had donations. So we didn't use any general fund money for any of this development. So we did very well with that. A little bit more of Phase 2, which was 2009 to the present, was development of the portion of the access road that goes up behind the campground. We got that done about halfway back, and then we ran out of funding. Construction of the wedding gazebo was just done about a year and a half ago, and that was the latest thing that we did for Phase 2. Where we're now is kind of the tail end of Phase 2, is we're trying to expand the parking lot. We're trying to develop some parking in the back of the park. We still have the amphitheater, where we want to be able to show the movies in the park and have some different things for the community at an amphitheater-type setting, and another concession building and vaulted restroom in the rear. So that's what we're kind of working on now. Phase 3 in the master plan was the Army Corps property, and that's where we were looking to lease that property to extend the trail. And we actually had the lease put in years ago, and it had gone all the way up to real estate, and we decided to pull back and hold off because we wanted to make sure we could manage that 55 acres that we had taken on. And that was a good thing, because we really needed to stop. And we developed that management plan, which has worked out really well, you know, the parking fee, and being able to manage what we had developed. That's worked real well, but it has been a challenge, and it still continues to be a challenge. But now we're ready to take a look again at that lease, and we have submitted a letter to the Army Corps of just a letter of interest to see what we would need to do if we wanted to lease that land and develop a trail. We do have a group of bike riders, I guess I would call it, that want to develop a trail in the back, and they have gone to a lot of trainings, and they feel that they can actually build the trail with volunteers and oversee the trail with volunteers as well. So once we get a letter back from the Army Corps, we'll come to council with what they tell us we would need to do and kind of go from there. So looking again at the master plan, again, Phase 1 is that front eight acres that we've accomplished. Phase 2 is the 47 acres that go here, and then the Army Corps property is this 90 acres here. And you could see kind of the plan. So where we're at now is, back here, Phase 3, we'll follow up. We'll hear what the Army Corps has to say, and then we'll present it to the City Council. Some of the current work that we're doing now, too, is refining the management plan for maintaining and operating the current park acreage during peak user times. In the past summer, we had more users than we've ever had, so that created more challenges. So we need to refine our management plan a little bit this next summer. We have a lot of gridlock at the front entrance of the park. We were closed as early as 10:30 in the morning at times to capacity, and what happens is the cars line up at the entrance and actually don't want to move because they are waiting for a parking space to come open, and that causes a problem with the busy street going above. So we've got to reconfigure that entrance somehow, and that's kind of what we're brainstorming on now. Finding solutions to the River Cove neighborhood river access concerns is, we're spending a lot of time on that right now, coming up with some cost and options, working with the neighborhood group, and then we'll present to council some options on how we can deal with some of that. Establishing project priorities between the pool locker rooms, community center renovations, and the needs for Jacob Myers Park expansion are something we need to talk about, because if we do come to you and ask for general fund money, whether it's for match for a grant or just to solve some problems, we need to look at the other needs, too. And the locker rooms and community center have some pretty dire needs that we need to take care of, where Jacob Myers has some needs, too, but we have to kind of weigh where we should put those funds. So basically, you know, that's where we are. I do feel we are able to get grant funding as we go along for some of these projects. We are waiting for development to occur that gives us more park development money to work with. And also, we're going to meanwhile brainstorm on maybe some things we can do in-house. We're looking at how can we maybe provide some dirt parking, at least in the back, maybe some parking that maybe wouldn't be as expensive as some of the parking we had considered before. One thing I think we might want to do, though, is, as we did with the pool locker rooms and the community center, we had an architect come out, do a conceptual design and a cost estimate. I think it's time to update, since our master plan was done in August 2003. We might want to get someone to come out and just do the rest of Phase 2 and help us with trying to figure out the problem of flow in the front of the park. Put it on paper, have a visual, and have a cost estimate, because that'll be useful as we go for grants, and we'll have some updated figures. So I might want to go out, if it's okay with everyone, if we get approval on going out for an RFP, it won't cost us anything, and I can get that together and present that as an option. So any questions?
We can't discuss or approve that tonight, can we?
This is on a new business item, so you can provide general direction. There's no actual expenditure of funds, so in terms of providing direction to proceed with that, and we can incorporate that into our strategic goals. I think that's more than appropriate. I think that's more than appropriate.
Okay, so you've been doing a great job. On the River Cove levee access, or the, the access to the river, is your plan also including a single-point access up and over?
For River Cove?
Yes.
Or for, oh, are you talking about like a pedestrian bridge in the future?
Not across the river, over the levee. For example, that levee is a must for the River Cove. If we provide a single staircase up and over with, you know, barriers to access any, that, that river along anywhere else on that side of the river, are you considering that?
That can be one of the options right now, we're putting-
Tom, have you researched that?
Have not.
I need that taken care of.
I will double check with the-
Thank you, because that is, to me, that would be the most cost-effective way to monitor people going in and out. As also, it's not making it restrictive to the river, they're allowed that single-point access, but having it just generally open to people going over the levee, digging holes into the levee is not acceptable, especially if we have a hundred-year flood.
Right, we have done a lot of work that we haven't presented to council yet. We're putting together a lot of costs and options, but that single-point access, we can include. I'll work with Tom and get that information. But we've talked to a lot of people, and we've gotten a lot of information to be able to share with you. And also, we have our next meeting with River Cove, I think, February 17th?
Seventeenth.
At the teen center, at 6:30 PM, and we'll kind of get all that information together before our March 24th presentation to council. But we'll make sure we include the single-point access as well, pros and cons of, of all the different options that we're coming up with, as well as costs, so, and, and our recommendations, what we think might work, too.
Comments, questions? This is a public forum. Anyone from the public wish to comment on the general master plan update? Saying none? I bring it back. Do we want to provide guidance for an RFP?
I think we should, it doesn't cost us anything.
Do we want an update on the String of Pearls the next time, too? From someone who's part of the committee?
Yes, that would be lovely.
And then a report back from the River Cove meeting. I, I do know you're talking about parking and, you know, that's, is, is an enforcement issue. But, okay, all right. We have reviewed the master plan and we have provided input. Do I need to make a motion on that? Nope, thank you very much. Well, that's one that I would have missed. Item 7.1, staff comments, please.
Mayor, members of the city council, I'll start off with the chief of police to provide an update on an event that happened over the weekend. The council, I know, is aware of it, but went for the public to get an update on some of the tagging that occurred and some of the outcomes.
Now, for those of you who've read the paper, it won't be much of an update. It'll just be basically restating what's already been out there. But a couple of days ago, there was a, an early AM tagging, let's say around 1:45 in the morning, on the 8th, where businesses that were east of Oakdale and north of Patterson were hit in succession by three individuals. An alert citizen observed what was going on, kept her distance, but was persistent in following them to a point of rest. They contacted us and worked with us to go ahead and help us with the investigation. And the, the three individual, individuals were cited, they were all juveniles, and, you know, there will be some accountability there. But I just wanted to emphasize the importance of citizens being engaged, being involved, but acting in a safe manner, using sound judgment, and communicating with us, and expressing that, you know, it can, it can work to the benefit of the community when they do that. So it's just a classic example of, of a citizen working with us to a, hopefully a positive conclusion. I'm assuming that if they are held accountable by the courts, then restitution will be paid, and some of those costs will be recovered, hopefully. So if you have any questions that I can answer, obviously, I'm somewhat limited, as are juveniles, but if I can answer them, I will.
They tagged elsewhere?
We're, we are researching that diligently. Anytime, anytime that we can identify suspects in a graffiti case, we compare that with all the data that we've catalogued, photos, and, you know, the, the style of their artwork, if you will, to go ahead and do a comparison and, and connect those cases with those suspects. So I know we had an individual that was tagging Tank around town a few years ago, and I want to say it was like a $10,000 aggregate in terms of dollar loss. So these, sometimes the small things equate to big things once you get to the end of it, so.
I command the citizen and also your officers.
Yeah, well, the kudos go to the citizen, really. If it wasn't for that individual, then we'd still be trying to figure out who did it, so. Anyway.
Thank you, chief, thank you.
You bet.
And then I'd also like Maricela Garcia to provide an update on the numerous community workshops that we have scheduled over the coming weeks. And I, I know the mayor, you'll be speaking more in regards to State of the City, but in addition to the State of the City on the 19th, we have a number of community workshops, and Maricela's going to provide an overview of those.
So several of the community workshops that we have coming up, tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock here at the city council chambers, we will have a review of the Nexus Fee Study. This Nexus Fee Study sets the system development fee rates that are assessed to all new development for capital improvement projects throughout the entire city. We have been working on this project for quite some time and have released the draft to the public. It's available on our website, as well as at City Hall North and City Hall South. Tomorrow's meeting will be just a public forum to ask, to be able to answer any questions that the public, our residents and our development public may have. And then we will bring that back to the city council for their consideration on March 10th. We also have a workshop with regards to Patterson Road. Several weeks ago, we presented to the city council some concepts on the alignment and restructuring of Patterson Road in terms of how many lanes of travel, bicycle paths, also discussed some of the constraints, and also the possibility of looking at having no parking along that in order to be able to accommodate all of the, the necessary improvements that need to be made. And so we would like to have this public, the opportunity to provide the public, to provide feedback. And this workshop will be held February 25th, which is also a Wednesday here at our city council chambers at 6 o'clock. And so we have notified all of the residents that live within the area, as well as our commercial businesses. And the third meeting that I'd like to invite you to is a meeting with regards to our ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. So this plan will evaluate all of our public facilities, as well as our streets and sidewalks, with regards to accessibility by our members of the disabled public. And so we are requesting feedback from them regarding any areas where they see the improvements need to be made to enhance the accessibility. And so this community forum will be on Wednesday, March 4th, at 6 o'clock, and will be held at the Riverbank Community Center. So we invite all the members of the public to attend.
Oh, thank you. So in addition to that meeting, we can also take comments on that via email or phone call, if individuals would like to come and provide comment to the city in terms of areas of concern that they may have in the city. And that workshop is different than the next workshop that I'm going to speak to, and that is a workshop for our business community to be able to be better prepared to deal with the, the issues related to the American with Disabilities Act and keeping their businesses compliant with that act. There is a workshop that the city of Riverbank is partnering with, the City of Oakdale Chamber of Commerce, Assemblymember Kristen Olson's office, and the Civil Justice Association. And this is going to be held on this Friday morning at 7:30, from 7:30 to 9:30 AM, at the Jean Bianchi Community Center in Oakdale. The address is 110 South Second Avenue. Again, that's 110 South Second Avenue in Oakdale. You may recall that we hosted one in the city of Riverbank in October, earlier this, in the fall of 2014. This is a follow-up to provide one in Oakdale. So we are happy to be able to provide an opportunity for our business community to be better prepared to address this issue, which is getting a, a lot more attention in recent, in recent weeks, thanks to the Modesto B article and, and the work of our legislators in Sacramento. So this is in addition to the other two meetings. I'll just reiterate, the March 4th, Saturday, March 14th, for district elections, that will be at the teen center, and I will hand it off at this point to the mayor and council at the State of the City on, on February, Thursday, February 19th at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Council comments, starting with council member Jones Cruz.
I just had two really quick things, and one of them was just to follow up with Jill, that I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at the State of the City on February 19th. And especially interested in seeing and hearing public comment and input with the regards to the district zoning, so, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Campbell.
I'd just like to hold up the flyer. Parks and Recreation is having a fundraiser with a 5K run walk on the April the 4th. You can find out information about it, and all the money that's raised was that will go to the Parks and Recreation program. And likewise, remind everybody, even though we had a little bit of rain, still conserve your water, it's not enough.
Council member Tucker.
I had an opportunity to work with our Riverbank Cub Scout PAC-10 last night, and they asked me to express their appreciation to Chief Kylie for a meeting with them recently. They really enjoyed their visit with him. And once again, to thank the city and city staff for the, the tour and being able to attend our meeting and so forth. They've had a wonderful time recently with, with the city, and they certainly do appreciate that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bobby Martinez.
As council member Campbell stated about the drought, even though we have had a lot of rain, the drought continues, and it is still a serious problem. And I'd like to publicly note that I appreciate the work that went into developing all of the, the reports about the ordinances tonight, and thank you for the hard work. I know it was not easy. And also, thank you to the Planning Commission for their work in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. First off, on the North County Corridor, the mention of the North County Corridor, a little problematic. I think it's not as problematic as it has been in the past, but I think it's now a great opportunity, especially in land development and our ability to annex in those regions for it. And it could be a, a major, major circulation improvement for the city of Riverbank. And I want to reiterate on the, on the planning documents tonight, tremendous amount of work and effort has gone in that. Over the last couple of years, we've been doing a lot of work on the, the planning documents, although these specific ones were not in goals for this six-month period. It's been part of this strategic planning all along, getting our, our planning documents in a row. We have a long ways to go and a very short time to get there. I want to thank the Riverbank Police Services, not only for the tagging, but a lot of the other items of it going on. Some of the, you may have known that a lot of the cells have emptied, and they're out on the streets with very little reason to stop doing any, any criminal activity, minor criminal activity. Still, it's against property, and it's against some safety. And I've experienced firsthand of the Riverbank Police Services providing excellent, well, I said services, I'll say services again, in the same sentence. But thank you very much. Last, I know I've talked about it before, I was speaking with Ms. Olson about the Riverbank Industrial Complex. We do need to have a meeting with Sierra Northern Railroad and talk about the easements, because as I was informed, their easement rights end in about 45 days, and they've already passed their renewal. So we need to get the strategy sooner than later, much sooner than later, and let them know what we intend on doing and see if they can partner with us. Before I go into the closed session, there's also items 10, which is the 10.1, the warrant registers. If there's any public comments on that, please make them now. Saying none, we're going to move into closed session, consisting of item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision probable of government code 54956.9 to potential case. Item 8.2, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code 54957.6, agency represented, representative, Jill Anderson, city manager. Employee organizations, city, Riverbank miscellaneous employees, Riverbank mid-management bargaining unit, Riverbank executive management. Before I go into closed session, is there any comments or questions on the closed session items? Saying none, we adjourn to closed session. We reconvene the regular city council and local redevelopment authority meeting. Item nine, report from closed session. Item 9.1, report from closed session. Item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation to potential cases. Direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, report on closed session on item 8.2, conference with labor negotiators. Again, direction has been provided to staff. With that, we conclude the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, council.[1757.33]